All right, and we'll call the order of the January 3rd meeting of Lake Mills City Council. Please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Schar.
Here.
Mrs. Fritsch.
Here.
Mr. Foster.
Here.
Mr. Kerkovich.
Here.
Mr. Fritsch.
Here.
Mr. Knippel.
Here.
Correction, approval minutes for December 20th, we have a motion to approve as written.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Call the vote, please.
Mrs. Fritsch.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich.
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch.
Aye.
Mr. Schar.
Abstain.
Motion passed four zero.
Correspondents, Diane, you want to lead us off?
Quiet here, nothing to report.
Yeah, quiet here, nothing to report.
I'm on board, quiet as well. Doug?
Quiet as well.
Aye too.
Aye too, all righty. Questions and public comment? Public's encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda unless the item is the subject of a public hearing. If your comments pertain to a public hearing, you're asked to hold your comments until the hearing. Public comments may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you've registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. State's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes. State your name and address when starting your comments and fill out the sheet provided. We have any... and Todd, welcome.
Sorry to be a Debbie Downer about your quiet correspondence, but I'm here to make some comments and ask some questions about the proposed new community center. I was in the council when the first one was approved and the tax bills were sent out. And that was done after a thousand dollars in studies and we expanded more than was proposed. And it has multi-uses and it's made of materials meant for at least a seventy-five-year-old lifespan. And it's only fifteen years, sixteen years, far short of what we promised at the opening ceremonies, so, I mean, what is going on? People don't know if, are we looking to buy the Rock Lake Center or are we looking to build a new one?
We're just looking. I think I'll pass this to Doug because he's on the committee.
Well, we are just, we're looking at it. We've considered everything. When was this done?
Two thousand. Opening, I mean, there's a plaque downstairs, opening ceremonies was in August of two thousand.
You're talking about this building?
Right.
That's what he's talking.
Yeah. And we, there was, obviously, the six-and-a-half million wasn't all a community center, but we, it was our intent that the community center below us was to last at least seventy-five years.
Well, it's a community center study that we've started to take and look at because it's been, there is, there are people who have been talking about it and pushing more than what is possible here in the city hall.
Like, what?
Athletics.
You see, we have exercise facilities.
Well, what's, everything is very nebulous. It's just, is there, when you look at other communities, for example, Wanakee, or Madison, or Watertown, or any of the other surrounding communities, there seems to be a need for kind of, let's put it this way, a center for community activities from kids on up to seniors.
But isn't that met by the current Rock Lake Activity Center?
It is, and there's been some discussions about that, and it's just, we're trying to feel it out. We're trying to get a senior group organized. We're trying to get the other groups organized, and we're just trying to see what can be done. It's very nebulous. It's being talked about if you'd like to come to the meeting.
Can I comment?
Another one, Mike?
Yeah, I'm not sure when the next one's scheduled.
I don't know off the top.
But it's, it's looking at everything from soup to nuts for the community that might be missing currently in our, what we currently have available for the whole community. You know, that doesn't, not that, not that we're looking specifically at it, but, you know, people bring up the fact of maybe the community could use a pool, maybe we could use another.
We had a school different, school district referendum in a pool.
Yeah.
Failed, so.
But that was a while ago, and a lot of people have moved into town since then.
Right, but the problem is.
But that's not the big issue here. A pool is not the big thing here.
No, it's not the big issue.
In fact, Todd, I'd encourage you to go to the meetings because right now, we've had a lot of seniors that wanted, that were interested in a facility, not just to use once a week, but a full-time facility for everything from recreation to, you know,
Classes.
Classes getting together, and, and we're studying that. That's what we're looking at right now. We also had a young group who said, you know what, there'd be, it'd be, we need a place for kids to go as well. And so, everything's kind of on the table. Nothing has been decided. We're not spending any money yet really, other than some research, but, but that's where we're at.
And if you have some concerns, then I'd suggest you come, now is the time.
Now's the time, yeah.
Right, yeah, rather than after the fact, which happened during the last project, so.
Also, currently, we're, we're using the basement of the congregational church as a site on Tuesdays and Thursdays, I think.
I think so.
Yeah, Tuesdays and Thursdays, and that is going pretty well.
It's picked up.
But that's just for the seniors.
That, that is just for the seniors, but it is something, the major problem, Todd, with the building here is because that room downstairs is used for all kinds of things. And the problem is, is for it to be, let me see, accepted or, or invested in by the older members of the community, they would like a space that's more their space, where they can bring in comfy furniture and they can, you know, do things that are, you know, not where the next day, it all gets ripped up and put away and some, you know, that's what we're kind of looking into. That's why we're looking outside of this building. It's, this building's getting a lot of use. Tonight's one of the most quiet nights. Usually, we have Boy Scouts during this time. And obviously, you know, we have the elections and we have meetings when the council has meetings. You know, it's very heavily used with the, but the point is, is that, that's what was brought to us, to look, and that's what we're doing. We're not, it will probably be a referendum, I would think.
If, there was an ordinance passed that anything over five hundred thousand has to go to advisory reference, so you are aware of that.
Yeah, we are aware of that. We, we talked about that at two meetings ago, I believe it was.
Okay.
But what I'll do is, as soon as I know when the next meeting is, I'll make sure you know, so hopefully you can make it to it.
And another bit of warning, this happened during the last project, using the term banquet facilities, that helped to gather signatures for the mayor referendum in two thousand. That rankled a lot of local businesses who are trying to provide such services. And it was also mentioned in the study for the restaurant as well.
I'm, I'm not sure. Could you back up? What are you?
Banquet facilities. It was in, it was in the minutes of the last meeting for the, for the committee in charge of this. And it was also mentioned in the article about the proposed restaurant.
Are we talking about Sandy Beach?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't make the Sandy Beach switch. I was still in the senior center. I was wondering why you were putting a restaurant in the senior center.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, it's the second time I saw it this year, and I want to warn you that that helped collect signatures for a mayor referendum. Because people feel that you're taxing businesses who are trying to provide banquet services for an operation to directly compete against them.
Such as what? Like who?
The golf course. Of course, the owner of the golf course was very adamant back then about that.
Okay, but that's not a very big space.
Well, is it government's job to provide banquet services?
So you're, but you're, so your personal feeling is that it's not?
We should not even mention it, if.
Well, it came up in a conversation.
I know.
And I think you're reading way too much into it.
Well.
It was just, it was in the minutes, it was in part of their conversation.
Yeah, I'm just warning you, though, people will pick up on that and run with it, so. You just, I'm just.
Fair enough.
Give me a piece of advice, so. All right, that's pretty much all I have. Do you have any follow-up?
I was just kind of curious, when you're talking about the banquet facilities, were they talking about in particular providing staff and everything to do that, or just having the facilities there?
Just the facilities. That's why we kept the kitchen downstairs to a minimum.
And it's still?
Yes. So if people really want to have a banquet, they can have it shipped in. However, if it's just a simple family reunion or potluck, just to warm things up, I mean, that, that's fine. But the idea of us having a huge kitchen.
Oh, gotcha, no, 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 no.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was thinking, when, when I think banquet, I think along the terms of a facility that can be used, that catering company can bring stuff into.
Right, which is why people do not want something like that built, because, like you just mentioned, who's going to come in and staff it, so.
Well, if, yeah, exactly, but if it's, if it's just a big facility.
Right.
Then the people that use it could pick the.
The caterers to bring the food in, right.
Yeah, or the, so.
Yeah, so, I would just keep it, I don't know, just.
Okay.
Banquet-sized room, I don't know, but make, be very careful, make it clear that we're not going to be, build a huge kitchen with walk-in freezers and all that.
Gotcha, no, that makes sense.
Because that was used against the council back in two thousand, that we're going to set up another restaurant, and people ran with it, and, so.
No, that makes sense, and I don't think we had any plans, but I'm glad you brought it up, so, so we can be aware of it.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
All right.
So, good job. Thanks for running, two of you who are running, and those who have run, and hopefully will run again.
All right. Thank you, Todd. And with that, it will close. Questions, public comments, any managers report? Nothing in there, but any, any questions? Anything we can send to Vicki?
I have one question, maybe the staff can answer. South Maine, there's a lot of survey markers going in. What is that for?
I'm not sure what that's for, I'm sorry. I can find out.
My guess would be that it's probably surveying for temporary limited easements for the construction that'll be upcoming. And there are probably a few places where they also have to get actual real estate, and that might be what they're surveying.
Okay. Don't make sense.
Any other questions? Move on. Minutes from the Plan Commission, October twenty-fifth of twenty sixteen, will be put on record as written. Council business, tavern licenses. Can we have the first name read, please?
The first license, Sarah Steffes, for tavern operators license.
Do we have a motion to grant Sarah a tavern license?
So moved.
A second?
A second.
All right, call the vote, please.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich.
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch.
Aye.
Mr. Schar.
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch.
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
And our second name?
Diane Awur, tavern operators license.
And a motion to grant the tavern license to Diane?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Can I call the vote, please?
Mr. Kerkovich.
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch.
Aye.
Mr. Schar.
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch.
Aye.
Mr. Foster.
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
All right, and discussion on electronics recycling. Mike?
Yeah, sure. I brought this up because of the recent changes in the way electronics recycling has happened, or has been modified inside of Jefferson County. You know, we used to have the ability to go to Watertown and take some stuff down there, and it's all been pulled away from this community. So I was doing some research, trying to find out where our closest place is to go, and as it stands right now, there might be one place in Fort Atkinson that we can take some limited items to, or we have to find.
You mean for free?
Not just, no, no, not for free.
Because you can put it on your, you can call John's.
Yes, you can call John's.
Tell them what you have.
Yep.
They'll give you a price. Once they've collected the fee, they'll schedule a date to come pick it up.
Right. But what I want to go into this a little bit further is, Wisconsin has the e-cycle program, and with the lack of areas that we as residents of Lake Mills have or don't have, I guess is the best way of putting it, do we want, or would we even be smart to sponsor our own collection point as the city of Lake Mills doing a collection point?
So much like Watertown's, you show your residents and you can?
You know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of issues that come along with that, and those are the things I think that we would really need to sort out and see if we really wanted to do something along the lines of setting up our own collection point. It could be costly, it could be unsightly, it could be, I don't know, a hard thing to deal with, because then we have to find our own recycle places to take the stuff.
Yeah, once you receive it, you own it.
Yeah, once you start doing it, you're right, you do own it.
Well, and now St. Vinnie's doesn't take them anymore.
St. Vinnie's won't take TVs anymore.
Computers.
Oh, computers, you're right.
They don't want them. They got nowhere to go with them.
So, what worries me about this whole thing is people dumping stuff.
Just putting it in the garbage.
Just putting it in the garbage, putting it wherever, you know, driving out in the industrial area and just dropping stuff off somewhere. Right, because there is a lack of areas for them to take this stuff to. I'm not sure that it would be cost-effective for us to do something as the city.
I think if we could get more information about John's, make it convenient.
Yeah, you know, I was reading some other articles on e-cycle Wisconsin, and some of the other communities have memorandum of agreements with Jefferson County to run the programs, to take the recycles and get rid of them once you collect them as a collector. I think this just needs to be a jumping-on point for us to talk about this. I'm, I'm thinking that there's stuff out there, there's places out there we can take this stuff to, that our citizens don't know about. You know, a lot of folks have brought up Best Buy in the past, and I did find out the Best Buy will take your old TVs and up to thirty-two inches if you take them to the store and drop them off. They'll take them. Anything above that, you have to call them and set it up, and they'll do a pickup for you. Will people do that? Most will. So, that's where I'm at with this. We have, we have very little information on our website right now to point to some of these other sites, and I'd, I'd like to see if we can get some of the e-cycle links on our website, so people can do some research on their own. There's also another site out there that's, that I found that was really good, is search earthnineoneone.com. And they go as far as, you know, you put your, your zip code in, and they'll, you tell them what you have, and they'll tell you where you can take it around your area. A lot of the stuff is goodwill. Goodwill in Fort Atkinson will take a lot of stuff. I don't know where it is, but Goodwill's listed in there.
Business twenty-six, gross, a quick trip.
So they'll take a lot of stuff, because they get money back from the recycling, unlike some of the other places like John's, where we have to pay them to take it away. That's the discussion I want to have.
Funding, funding, it used to be, I know, because you took it, the county had pickup sites, and.
Yep.
You had to pay, I think, a nominal fee.
Yep.
And, and I believe there was some funding that they had, and I think that's dried up, hasn't it?
Yeah, it has, and.
They don't take it anymore.
Yeah, they won't take most of the stuff anymore, and they won't take it unless you're a resident there in the communities. Now, we could possibly work with a memorandum of Jefferson County to set up, to have a clean-sweet pickup once or twice a year, done inside of Lake Mills. We would have to supply the manpower to manage it, but all the stuff that would be collected would be taken by Jefferson County, so.
The problem with that is that, the thing that's a problem for the citizens here is when somebody moves, like your son.
Right.
Or somebody goes into a nursing home and the family has to dispose of a, of a whole household. And a lot of times, these are people that don't even live in town, but they're disposing of stuff from in-town. And having the site on two days during the year doesn't help those people at all.
Yeah, you're right.
And I think maybe we do, maybe we need to provide a holding site. You know, they pay us, like they would pay John's. We hold it until, and then get John's to come and pick it up, or whatever would happen on those two sites, on dates.
Yeah.
You know, something like that.
And that's, that's a possibility. It just all depends on what John's is willing to do.
You know, you're getting hazardous material.
You are.
And there is, there is a book that thick on how to deal with that stuff, and it's not pretty, this, I don't think the city even wants to get involved in that. You know, as, as long as John's will come and pick it up for a nominal fee, we should, we should make that available, call them, they'll come out, get it. Problem solved. And as far as a problem now, I haven't really seen a problem with disposing.
Just when there's big pickups, sometimes people put out things that won't be picked up by big.
Yeah, and they, and they always will, because they just don't know. But, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, I agree with you. I think putting something on our website that says.
Make it easy.
You have, you have an old TV or a computer, this is who you call, John's phone number, big, and they will tell you how much it'll cost to come and pick it up.
Right.
And that's the world we live in today.
In Madison, they just increased their fee to, I think, fifteen dollars for a computer monitor.
Mm-hmm.
They'll, they'll, they don't pick it up, they'll accept it.
So you get it there, paid it, handed over.
You have to get it there, but then it's a fifteen-dollar fee.
Because that has a lid in it, that's why they, why they do that.
And I know for me, when, when my son moved, it was, you know, for years it was free. You'd go to Watertown, there was a place, there was always somewhere you could go. But, but the reality of having to look around and go, I gotta pay forty bucks to get rid of this stuff, but that's, that is the world we live in. It's, electronics are, they're not clean.
Costs a business.
Yeah, there's a lot of stuff in them, and, and people are getting more and more of them, so.
Yeah, it would be kind of interesting to know if any businesses have been inundated with stuff in the community because of the lack of collection points, you know. I'm worried, I'm not worried, I'm, I'm wondering whether or not any of them that have their dumpsters out there that aren't locked up are getting hit at night with stuff that's getting tossed in there, and.
I think just about everybody who has a dumpster and it's not locked.
Locked.
Has a problem. I mean, I don't know anybody who's a businessperson that doesn't have a locked dumpster.
And then that means all that stuff gets into our landfill recycle.
Mike, it hasn't been a problem. You know, let's not make a problem if it's not one.
Well, although electronics recycling is going to become something that, you know, being, I think, ahead of it might, might be a good idea, you know. But yeah, John's, John's was my answer.
Do we have somebody that can contact John's and find out what they, what they'll accept, and then we'll see if we can get something on the?
Yeah, with the fees.
Yeah, with the fees on the website.
I think I've got some information in my office. I'll take a look at it, or I can email over my contact and see if they've got, even if it's updated information, and I can make sure it gets on the website and include the phone number. Maybe put something under the announcements for a while, again, just freshening it, so people don't have to dig into the website to find a link, so put it there for a while, for those that are looking. I can send you some stuff, Mike, too, if you'd like.
Yeah.
And maybe you can tell me what you're kind of thinking, but you can definitely do something on the website to, to increase.
All right, Misty, are you in charge of the website?
She's in charge of everything.
No.
And then, since you brought up next steps, what do you want, or?
What I'd like to see is next steps, what Misty has.
Okay.
And then we'll go from there to get something on the website, and, and we'll see if we need to.
Do you want to keep that on the agenda?
I don't think we need to.
It can probably be handled internally.
Yeah, I don't think we need to put it back on there again.
Okay.
I just wanted to have a good discussion about it, and my thoughts about what's going on in the, the world today, because in my world, e-waste is a big, big problem.
It's a big deal.
Ten thousand pounds every other week, it seems like we're, we're spitting out, we're like, where's this stuff coming from? And, you know, you gotta pay to get rid of it, so.
All right, that's it for that one. Anything else? Resolution seventeen zero one, can we have that read, please?
Resolution seventeen dash zero one, preliminary resolution declaring intent to exercise special assessment police powers under section sixty-six point zero seven zero three Wisconsin statutes, Brewster Drive. May it resolve by the city council, the city of Lake Mills, Jefferson County, Wisconsin. One, the city council hereby declares its intention to exercise police power under section sixty-six point zero seven zero three Wisconsin statutes to levy special assessments upon property within the following described areas for special benefits conferred upon such properties by installation of sidewalk. For the purposes, for the purpose of sidewalk installation, the area includes all property abutting both sides of Brewster Drive from its intersection with Tyrena Park Road to the north to a point approximately a hundred fifty feet south of its intersection with Plainview Terrace. Two, the public improvement shall consist of the installation of sidewalk. Three, the total amount assessed against the property is a defined assessment. District shall not exceed the total cost of the public improvements less applicable credits. Four, the city council determines if the improvements constitute an exercise of police powers, and the amount assessed against each parcel should be based on a front-foot basis. Five, the assessment against any parcel may be paid in full or in annual installments, the number of which shall be determined at the public hearing of the proposed assessment. Six, the city engineer shall prepare a report that shall consist of, A, preliminary plans, specifications for the improvements, B, statement of benefits to affected properties. Seven, the city treasurer shall prepare a report that shall consist of, A, an estimate of the entire cost of proposed improvements, B, scheduled proposed assessments. Eight, when both reports are completed, they shall be filed with the city clerk for public inspection. Nine, upon receipt of both reports, the clerk shall cause notice to be given stating the nature of the proposed improvement, the general boundary lines of the proposed assessment district, including a small map thereof, the time and place at which the report may be inspected, and a time and place at which all interested persons or their agents or attorneys may appear before the governing body and be heard concerning the matters contained in the preliminary resolution reports. The notice shall be published as a class one notice, and a copy shall be mailed at least ten days before the hearing to affected landlords whose post office address is known or can be ascertained with reasonable diligence. Ten, the hearing in accordance with section sixty-six point zero seven zero three sub seven Wisconsin statutes shall commence not less than ten or more than forty days after publication of the class one notice.
And a motion to adopt resolution seventeen oh one.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
And discussion? Questions? Maps, do you want to show, or?
Yeah, I don't know if we can show the maps, at least one map to show where the, where the new sidewalk is going to go. I'm assuming this is. Yeah, I had asked Betsy to attach that into our stuff.
Is it available on the internet, on the website? Can people go on the website and see the maps?
Pretty sure.
Yeah, it's, it's on the Public Works Board.
Underneath the Public Works Board, it's public, and.
All right.
Yep.
So go to the Public Works Board.
Agenda from the.
Last meeting.
December twelfth.
December twentieth meeting? I'm not, if it was twenty, twenty.
The week before. There, there was the second Tuesday.
The thirteenth.
Thirteenth.
Yeah, December thirteenth.
Public Works Board, and it's in the agenda there, so, I mean, anybody, even if we put it on here, nobody's going to be able to read it.
See it, yeah.
Right, right, and the plans as they are in here are not on just one document, where you can see the whole project, so it's not that easy to, to just put it up on the projector.
It's like twenty pages. It's like twenty pages.
Twenty-eight pages, I think I'm pulling up right now.
But it's basically Brewster Drive.
Right.
And the reason that, that, uh, preliminary assessment for the sidewalks is because we are doing roadwork.
Right.
And this is areas that don't currently have sidewalk now.
That's correct.
Yes, new sidewalk, whereas if there is sidewalk, we...
We pay for the repair.
The city pays for the repairs.
Now, I did hear in the, watching the video, about a class two notice. Was that a misstatement? It's a class one notice only?
It's probably a class one notice because the resolutions have been checked against the statute and we just kind of recycle them each time. So, um, I'll double check, but I'd be willing to almost bet that it's a class one.
Okay.
And the public review was in December, thirteenth?
Public comment, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, but then there still is going to have to be a public hearing.
Okay.
So, public hearing will come next and then the final, which could potentially be the same, same meeting time.
I just would like to make a comment because I, I think it's important to remember that this is a subdivision that came in during a time where we were absent a city manager back years ago. And it got brought in without having the sidewalks put in by the developer. Today, when something comes in like this, the developer puts in these sidewalks. So, this is sort of an anon, anonymous, I can't say the word. But anyway, it's, it's, and unfortunately, that happened and we can't go back in time and fix it.
Yeah, and...
It shouldn't have been that way.
You're right. And exact, and according to the way it has been, that, uh, you know, if, if the subdivision is built, we build a builder or the developer. And then I'm a hundred percent sure they put those costs off under the homeowners, so they're paying for the sidewalk anyway.
Unfortunately, this was one that got...
Yep. So, it's not like somebody is getting something for free out there. They didn't have to pay for their sidewalks because they bought in a development that already had it, well...
It's in the price of the lot.
It's in the price of the lot. They're paying for it anyway, so...
Unfortunately, this is...
Yep.
Yeah.
All right. Any other discussion? Call the vote, please.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Ordinance eleven seventy-four, can we have the title of that one read, please?
Ordinance eleven seventy-four, amending Lake Mills Elementary School crossing zones, no parking areas, and stop sign placement.
All right, and this is the third reading. We have a motion to adopt ordinance eleven seventy-four.
So moved.
Second, all right, right there. And Diane, any...
Well, I'm going to, um, pass to the police chief on if maybe you could come up and, and field any questions, if there are any. This is a ordinance that took two years to develop?
No.
Since the new school came in, then...
Yeah, actually, um, since the new school went in, we made several changes to the signage around there. Initially, we, uh, we did some signage. We knew that, uh, with a little bit of time, with watching traffic flow and, uh, uh, you know, where the buses, you know, the directions that the buses were coming in, as well as, uh, people coming in to pick up and drop off their kids and, and, uh, you know, as well as the kids where, where they're crossing, just kind of taking all those factors into account. Uh, we knew that we would have to take another look at it after we, you know, after a little bit of time had passed. And we did that and we made some changes to the signage then. And yet, we still had some concerns, uh, coming in, uh, you know, not just from, uh, you know, from citizens, but also with, uh, law enforcement in the school itself. So, what we decided to do was have DOT send in an expert or have an expert come and speak with us. Paul Hermanson, myself and Dwayne Vandermaus were involved in those discussions and, uh, as well as Officer Troy Aestric, our school liaison. And, uh, what we did was we sat down and discussed the signage that we thought was appropriate. And, uh, the, uh, DOT sign, uh, expert, I guess, shy of knowing his official term, uh, or official name, pointed out quite a few deficiencies that we had in our, our signage around that school, not just that school, but actually all our schools. And so, uh, working with the state on that, uh, we were able to put together a plan of the, I guess, a proper format, which is acceptable by state standards for signage around the elementary school. We decided to start with that one first, since we've been working on that one for three years now. Uh, so, what is, what has been brought forth, I guess, to, uh, to council for, for approval is, uh, hopefully, the final signage, uh, stage that we hope to go through with this particular school. But also is, uh, follows the state guidelines as being what is considered to be, um, approved and acceptable for signage around that school.
I already have the traffic flow problems kind of smoothed out since the start, since we had the new school open up.
Oh, ye, yes, sir, absolutely. We've, uh, we've seen some significant changes. Uh, you know, as we were making some incremental, um, I guess, changes to the signage, but, uh, things have improved significantly. And I think with this final, uh, sign renovation, I guess, it should, we should be good to go for, from here on out with that, with the elementary school. And keep in mind, we will be looking at the other schools.
I was just gonna ask that.
Yes, those, those will be coming. We figured we would get the elementary school done, done first.
All righty.
Steve, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to adopt ordinance eleven seventy-four, um, as presented.
Yep, we had...
We just did.
We got a, we got a motion and a second. Your name's on it, actually.
I know. I do the same thing all the time.
Your name's on it already, so we're good.
It's like, where was I?
Well, anything else? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
I'm okay.
And any other? All right, call the vote, please.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
And resolution seventeen dash zero two, can we have that read, please?
Resolution seventeen dash zero two, in appreciation of public service to the City of Lake Mills from City Attorney Vicki Schmidt. Whereas the City Council of the City of Lake Mills desires to recognize and honor Vicki Schmidt for her years of loyal service to the City of Lake Mills and its citizens. And whereas Vicki Schmidt has served the City Council and all departments of the city with a desire to provide the highest level of service through her valuable talents and professional expertise as a city attorney to the City of Lake Mills. And whereas Vicki has devoted numerous hours to provide positive contributions to all operations of the city while exhibiting the highest level of loyalty to the city and enthusiasm for her profession. And whereas Vicki's resolute attention to detail, constant professionalism, and ability to understand and respond to the needs of the city have contributed to the lasting improvement of the City of Lake Mills. Now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Lake Mills does hereby recognize the dedicated public service and career accomplishments of Vicki Schmidt and extends best wishes for enjoyable retirement.
And a motion to adopt seventeen oh two?
So moved with pleasure.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. And then, I know, Vicki, I know you didn't want any plaque, I know you didn't want any fanfare made of this, but when someone puts as many years doing, uh, legal work and HR and all the other hats you've worn for as long as you have and done it as well as you have, you get recognized. So, with that, actually, you didn't get a plaque because you didn't want one, but we did get it.
Can we meet her in the front?
Can we meet her in the front? We did get you flowers.
Oh, okay, thank you. If we'd like to come up. Um, I would just like to mention as we move that I was on the City Council when we hired Vicki. And I think it's one of the best hirings I've ever done in my life. And, uh, I just wanted to say I'm really happy I was there.
I, yeah, I can take a picture of him. Thank you.
He's kind of obligated now.
Obligated, so what? I did. It's my new background.
Move in.
Are we ready?
No.
Got it?
Got it. Good day.
All right, so we got a motion second. Anything else for Vicki, or? Call the vote, please.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Kerkovich?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Scharr?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Future agendas, recommendations, anybody? See no? See someone thinking? No?
Maybe at the next one.
Well, maybe at the next one. All right, and with that, we're adjourned.